Good evening and welcome to the Joint City Council and City of Series Financing Authority Meeting for Monday, June 10th, 2019. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Council and Board Member Condit.
Here.
Council and Board Member Doroset.
Here.
Vice Mayor and Chair Rhino.
Here.
I mean Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino.
Chair.
Council and Board Member Klein.
Here.
Mayor and Chairperson Vera.
Here.
Next, we will have the invocation by Adrian Condit, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
If I'm not going to preach to you guys tonight, I have another appointment. And I've got to get to it pretty quick, so anyway, and I'll give you the score later on. Father in heaven, we want to thank you again for another wonderful day that you've allowed us to live in this world, and we're so grateful that you love us. I pray today that you'd watch over each of us. I pray for this council meeting tonight. I ask for your divine presence to be in present. I ask you, Lord, to guide the minds and hearts of every council member as they transact business for this city. I pray that you would give them wisdom and understanding, and when they vote, they'll know in their heart that they're voting in the right way. I just ask you, Jesus, to be with them, overshadow them with your love, be with their families, their homes, be with all of us, every person here tonight. I pray that you'd be with their home and their families. We ask you to give a good time for business session tonight, and we give you praise for it in Jesus' name. Amen. God bless all of you.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one presentation this evening. It's Disability Awareness Proclamation. I think Michelle Allen is... Great. She's the Director for the Society for Disabilities. I'll read the proclamation for... The proclamation of the City of Series proclaiming June 2019 as Disability Awareness Month. Whereas the City Council of the City of Series have recognized healthy communities as a priority, and whereas disabilities can affect all people regardless of race, age, gender, or social status, and the essence of life is not embodied by physical or mental perfection, but it is an integral part of the human spirit. And whereas increasing public awareness about diversity, diverse abilities is vital to fighting the stigma and discrimination that often serve as a barrier to employment, socialization, and individual well-being. And whereas there are an estimated 4,050,631 people with disabilities in the state of California, and over 68,840 people over the age of five with disabilities in St. Louis County. Whereas within the next year, at least one out of eight Californians will experience a disability personally or through a family member. And whereas the City of Series wants to celebrate and recognize people with different abilities, and whereas people with different abilities are independent, productive, and part of the community. And whereas education, understanding, access, engagement, and relationships are important components of a connected, livable, and healthy community. And whereas by developing relations with our neighbors, we make our community a place where everyone participates and is a valued member. And whereas the Society for Disabilities will commemorate June 2019, and each June hereafter as Disability Awareness Month. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Series that June 2019 is Disability Awareness Month within the City of Series, and we urge all citizens to become aware of the needs and capabilities of persons with disabilities proclaimed this 10th day of June 2019.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. On behalf of those with disabilities, both seen and unseen, here in our community and beyond, I'd like to thank you for your support of Disability Awareness Month. We have had Disability Awareness Month proclaimed for the last eight years throughout St. Louis County, and we're proud to announce that this year we have also had proclamations throughout Merced and San Joaquin Counties as well. So, we're really glad that the Valley is really embracing disability awareness, and we encourage everyone to check out our website at societyfordisabilities.org. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to citizens' communication to counsel on matters not included on the agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the post-it agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the post-it agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, is there anyone that would like to speak to the council on an item that... or on something that's not on the agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Dave Pratt, Series. You know, the last meeting, when you see something on the agenda that says "Discussion", I assume that means they're going to discuss it, but apparently it's just a presentation. A thing with the... You know, five minutes after I got home, somebody set off a fireworks. And a week later, I could have heard a couple muffled ones, but the houses closed off for the heat. I was going to say, forget about the inserts and the newspaper, but got the bill, and it really is an impressive insert, and hopefully a lot of people see that. I know my wife has phone numbers so she can call. My suggestion is you ought to think about putting flyers, flyers and posters out around the town so people can see them at different businesses and stuff. And that's going to be the next few weeks, we're going to see how that works out, but basically, most of it's going to come down the boots-on-ground. And a couple, at least a couple of weeks prior to and a couple of weeks after, it really gets bad, and that's about the only... You've got to catch them and... Anyways, but lots of luck with that. The lawn signs, that's going to be good for at least a week. I know when at least one or two people ask us if we had illegal fireworks for sale, and it says, "Not unless we want to lose our nonprofit and wind up in jail." But anyways, I had a little more, but I forgot. All right, thank you.
My name is Lee Brandt. I just wanted to talk about, you know, the last meeting, how we had the... What is it, the proclamation or whatever it go through about the apartments and all that stuff that was going to be across from the post office? Well, I had an incident just last week that I went to go to the post office, and there was a lady standing in the driveway with pushing a cart. And there was about five of us that could not get in there. So, we had to go right... We had to go by and make U-turns on down there. But that just, you know, you guys did a great thing by turning that thing down.
Is there anyone else? Okay.
You got somebody?
Yep.
Genically serious. I know you... When I read this, you'll probably think it's repetitious, but sometimes you have to do that to get the point across. First of all, I'd like to thank Fire Chief Kevin Wise for his presentation at the May 28th, 2019 City Council Meeting for the Celebrate Safe Illegal Fireworks Enforcement Campaign for 2019 to stop illegal fireworks in our city, along with Chief Police Rick Collins and the Public Safety Announcement and the new face of the Series Police Department website. I hope the fireworks campaign has a great effect on the violators this Fourth of July, 2019. I'd like to bring up a subject I've brought up before in the past and most recent to the City Council. You know, you're not going to like this. It is about noise in our city. The areas we as citizens call our neighborhoods, the streets we live on. If individuals in Series do not have any neighborhood or street problems in their area, they are truly lucky. Many here in Series are not so fortunate to experience the peacefulness of such calm and comfort as some might have as a homeowner. Way too many homeowners have been dealing with these noises, these noise issues for years. If you have or presently a victim, you know how it can affect your health and can make you very physically ill. Let me tell you from experience, it's nothing... No, excuse me. From experience, it's not something you want to happen to you or a loved one. Continue music or any loud noises that disturb your comfort or health trying to live in peace in your home inside or outside is wrong. As our own Mayor Vera once said at a City Council meeting some years ago, "If I can hear it, it's too loud." I urge the members of the City Council to talk to citizens in Series they might know and those they pass on their daily journeys, and ask them what problems they might have that bothers them or might be in their neighborhoods that make them uncomfortable. Noise, parking, speeding, anything. And then try and find a way to relieve those individuals with some solutions to help them. Give them some comfort and let them know it is all right to exercise their rights and to not be afraid. And if need be, let them know they can call the Series Police Department non-emergency telephone number 538-5712 and 538-5713, and they can be anonymous. If citizens of Series do nothing to improve problems and issues in our community to make things better, then everyone in our city is at loss. And the unpleasant element continues to have control and make it difficult to enjoy our homes we work so hard for and wish to enjoy in the present and into the future. The silence of good citizens has to stop. Speak out and be heard, be a voice in a better community. We all share or let us continue to lose. Members of the City Council, I have said this before to you and believe it should be said again. Always remember the people who put you where you are today. It is not always about city revenue. It is the people who come first. Improve the not-improved situations in Series. Take back our city from those who use Series as their own playground toy box of bad deeds to disrupt what should be a good life for those who live here.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item?
Joe Perez. I've been having a problem since, and I speak about two months ago, about this problem. Every weekend, there's circles on the street, on the corner of my street, and there's people parking on the side of the curbs. There's seven times already I got hit, almost got hit. What can I do to people not to make donuts? And I've got to do something about it. Because every weekend, they got parties all over the place. And this been for years now.
Where is this located?
Right there on Rhodey Road, 2609. That's where I live.
Okay. And is this... You said this has been brought up before?
Pardon me?
To us. To us.
I don't remember. I must have been here at that meeting.
He spoke once before, but he didn't give his address or information. We have looked into the situation of the parking, but it sounds like he's describing more than what his complaint previously was, that the residents in the neighborhood were parking and he didn't have parking spaces. So, we did look into that issue to see where the issue and where some vehicles that needed to be abated. That was addressed, but it sounds like there's more of an issue that we need to look into.
Can we reach out to him?
Of course. If you can get his information. Rick, can you get his information, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. We'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none this evening. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the 11 consent calendar items, or three new business, or two public hearing items? Okay, hearing none. We will move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? Number nine. All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like a consent calendar item pulled other than item nine? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on the other items.
Move to approve 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, ABC, 6, 7, 8, 10, and 11.
Second. Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call, please?
Council and Board Member Condit.
Aye.
Council and Board Member Doroset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino.
Yes.
Council and Board Member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairperson Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item number nine, resolution number 2019-63, approving the annual report of the Series Downtown Revitalization Area CDRAB for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and setting a public hearing on June 24th, 2019 to approve a levy assessment for CDRAB activities and projects. Councilmember Klein? Well, what I would like to do is ask the council to put off approving the CDRAB budget until the next meeting so revisions can be made in Exhibit A, 2019 budget, annual budget. Talking to Mr. Hallam, that there is some stuff that was omitted in this with ONTEL and some of the security that they did, that they... He just supplied us with the wrong information. He did have the right information, what I do believe, with the planning commission, but it did not make it into our packet. So, I'd ask that we'd postpone this until the next meeting.
The information that was incorrect was the 1819. The budget information for 1920 is correct.
That's correct. That's what I said. It's Exhibit A, the 1819 budget, so that is part of our packet. So, I'm asking that it be postponed until corrections can be made because of some discrepancy in looking at the numbers for me.
So...
Exhibit A is the... No, Exhibit E. I'm sorry, Exhibit E.
So, it's a reference document for fiscal year 1819, which we announced to approve is... The action tonight is the annual report, so we can correct that, but we're also setting the public hearing for the 24th. So, if you don't approve that action, then we would need to move the public hearing out as well. I believe it's Greg Steve, if you want to provide some...
The hearing tonight is to approve the annual report and set the hearing date.
Right.
But I think perhaps, Mr. Wells, we could set the hearing date, and then on the 26th, do both those actions, and that could be...
That'd be a good...
I mean, it is a backup document, but that is something that you could still...
I have no problem doing both of them in the same night.
Yeah.
But, you know...
Council discretion, please.
We can just correct that Exhibit E in the staff report and then...
It's a support document for last year, the information for this year is correct.
But that's doable.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Mr. Hallam, the downtown businesses, business owners, did they receive written notice of the CDRAB meeting of 5:20? Or was... Did they receive it via mail?
They received it via mail. For 5:20 hearing.
Okay. Did you also do the windshield survey to be sure there aren't businesses downtown that you aren't aware of, or you're pretty comfortable with the list that you have?
We've got an updated list, and we double-checked that. And there were three that either had relocated, but they still showed a city downtown address, and then two new ones that hadn't been picked up yet. And so, we did get a... I feel very confident in an up-to-date business list.
Okay, thank you.
So, do you have a motion on the floor? I'd like to make a motion that we take Resolution 2019-63 and move it to our next City Council meeting.
We need you to set the public hearing for that.
And we can set the public hearing for that also.
Perfect.
So, we can do both of them at one time. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Before I call the vote, is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and Board Member Condit.
Aye.
Council and Board Member Doroset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino.
Yes.
Council and Board Member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairperson Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, we have no unfinished business this evening. We have three new business items. The first item is item number 12, Approval of the Adopt a Park Program Guidelines.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Tonight, we're bringing back to approval of the Adopt a Park Program. This was reviewed the first meeting in March, and so, we kind of did some research with other cities surrounding us, some of Bay Area, Sacramento Area, and also Southern California. So, we came together with a program that has worked very well for the city of Turlock. It's been very successful. And this program gives options for residents, our community, or businesses to volunteer to give back to the parks. And kind of, we have three different options that our Adopt a Park Program we're proposing to you tonight is... First is our Good Neighbor Program. That would be a one-time volunteer commitment. We do see a lot of that with our parks in the past with... If it's a youth group or a church group, so it's commit to just a one-day cleanup at one of our parks. Our second option is actually where they get the Adopt a Park, and they have to agree, this group or agency, to do four cleanups a year. And our third option would be improvement donation, and that's someone that wants to give back by giving a bench or a playground, a donation back to the city to fund that material or that equipment cost. So, putting this program together, we're ready to launch once we get tonight's approval, hopefully, of council. So, I wanted to open up if the council had any questions regarding the proposed Adopt a Park Program.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
I didn't hear you.
What's that?
I have quite a few questions.
Okay.
And first one, I'll ask Mr. Wells. Why was Recreation chosen to staff this rather than parks?
The first, after the meeting, staff got together, Recreation, Public Works, myself, Mr. Westbrook, to kind of discuss how the program might look and how it might shape. The overwhelming consideration of the different needs within the organization felt it was a better fit at this point in time for Recreation to take the lead on it, something that Matt had an interest in. And Public Works was, feel they were getting pulled a little too far in other needs, so the decision was made to move forward with Mr. Lawrence to lead on this.
Also, to add into it real quick, is we're doing some adjustments in our staffing, so more public outreach. So, this fit really well into our public outreach to the community this next year.
But I believe we've heard many times that Recreation is very short-staffed.
So is Public Works.
So, it's eeny-meeny. Because then if I go on and look at, well, first of all, the very first, you have three different programs, and do we have staffing for that to take care of that? But then when I start looking at the actual program itself, I think the first thing we need to do is if we want people to call the Recreation Department, we need to be sure our phone number is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Step six is return any borrowed equipment. Are we actually going to loan out city equipment? We aren't expecting people? I mean, when my husband and I went out and did the Rose Garden, when we did Rhino Park, we took all of our own things. Are we going to be providing and turning and hoping that people return it?
Absolutely. We're going to build a relationship with these partners. They're going to have to turn in waivers and Adopt a Park for them. So, we are going to provide trash pickers or weed pullers, that type of stuff, for the community, for their safety, and also to get the job done.
So, how do we ensure that those things get returned?
As part of it, I would meet, or one of my staff members would meet with the community organization or group, at least two to three business days out before the meeting to go over what needs to be done in the park. And we'll be closely working with the Parks Division to identify things that need to be done, but I can give you examples, like over at River Buffalo Regional Park, just pulling weeds is major. So, we would make sure they had the proper equipment checked in and out. I would also, if time availability, I'd stop by on a Saturday to check and see how things were going. So, I think we have an equipment checkout list, and again, none of that equipment is going to be so expensive that if one or two go missing, it's only going to be $10 or $20.
Only $10 or $20? Okay. I personally believe that most people have the yard equipment to go out and do what needs to be done, and then we don't need to increase our staff time trying to chase it down, but that's my personal belief.
And I think when we met with Turlock, the city of Turlock, a few, about a month and a half ago, they do provide some of the basic equipment. They thought that was necessary for the safety of the community members and stuff. So, I mean, if there's picking up trash, I know between our HR director will talk, you know, there are some challenges if there's a hyperdemic needle or something in it. We want to make sure they have the proper trash picker-uppers to get the trash picked up and cleaned safely.
Under the... Under the Adopt a Park sponsorship, when I first brought this up, I was thinking that if someone was going to commit to adopting a particular park, that they would commit to go out at least once a month, because four times a year is not going to keep a park cleaned up. And my idea was that they're going to become vested in that park, and once a month, if they go out, they can stay on top of it. But if they go out every four months, you know how bad those weeds are going to be? And that's going to be really discouraging. Plus, it's really not getting what we want done. We want people to take pride in their parks, and in four months, it's going to look bad. Or three months, it's going to look bad.
Would you be open if 10 of the 12 months they did a project out at the park, would that suffice your concern, just with rain, weather, heat, you know, kids getting out of school? So, if they did 10 of the 12 months, would that work if we changed that?
Why can't we just do a monthly Adopt a Park Program? I don't understand why we would... If somebody's willing to adopt a park, why would they not be willing to go out there once a month?
And I think, again, when we met with Turlock, some of the feedback...
Well, okay, we met with Turlock. I understand that. But again, I'm talking about Series.
Yeah.
And I know from my own personal experience of going out and seeing what happens so quickly in our parks that every three months is not going to do it, okay? That's just me personally, and I'll leave it up to the rest of the council. So, you addressed why Toby did, about why the Recreation Department is doing it rather than parks. But it seems to me that parks, when the orientation meeting, that parks should be involved because they're familiar with the parks.
Absolutely.
Where...
Absolutely.
But I'm looking here, and it says that they have to attend a brief orientation provided by the Recreation Department. I don't see anything about parks.
We can definitely add in parks, but we want to try to do it during the week to minimize overtime or costs. So, we would set that up with the park supervisor or one of his maintenance leads to have that in if it's a... So we would set that up with the park supervisor or one of his maintenance leads to have that in if it's a doable time. And a lot of people do work, so we're done about five or six in the evening. That could be a challenge for Public Works because that's going to probably incur overtime. So I'm going to work closely with the Parks Department to address that. I think we have a proven success with River Bluff Regional Park, getting that park up in three or four months, looking good. So we have a strong relationship with the Public Works Department. And I feel, I've also, before coming here, have worked in the parks and oversaw regional parks and, um, large park facilities. So I can definitely meet with the staff and feel comfortable giving them clear direction on how to handle what needs to be done in the park.
Okay, so if your comment.
My background is more than Recreation, it is Parks.
If your comment about trying to reduce overtime, then the Recreation Department will meet with the adopting organizer at the Adopted Park site at the start of the sponsoring period to discuss cleanup and maintenance priorities. Why couldn't we do that during our orientation?
Well, I think.
Why do we have to have another onsite meeting that is going to, and it's, it's going to tie up Recreation time and it's going to tie it, tie up the adopters' time?
And I think that will be set over time with relationship versus our, um, neighbor, Neighborhood Day versus, I'm sorry, our Good Neighbor Day versus our Adopt a Park. Once we build that strong relationship with Adopt a Park sponsorship, I think those are things that maybe we won't have to meet out there. I can go during the week and address, hey, this is kind of a, you're going to want to go out this weekend. This is what Parks and our Recreation see that needs to be done in the park. So building that relationship with.
Oh, okay. I'm just trying to make it easier, all right? On staff and as, as well as on this, I'm, the one I'm looking at right now is the Good Neighbor Day.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so the basic requirements for Good Neighbor Day, the very first bullet, it says, um, you have to have the onsite meeting at the start of the sponsor, sponsorship day, so it should be during the sponsorship day. But then if you drop down, it says cleanup may be more often if it is determined that the park or facility is in need of additional improvements. I don't know why that's there for a one-time cleanup.
Well, I think our goal is with the one-time cleanup is to get their buy-in to do it multiple times. So definitely, when they go out there, that we have plenty of work for them to do, that they'll want to adopt the park long-term, so.
Well, this is under the Good Neighbor Day. So under the Good Neighbor Day, I don't believe we need cleanup maybe more often because this is a one-time shot. Adopted Parks will be assigned on a first-come, first-served basis. I don't believe that belongs under Good Neighbor Day because they've already chosen what their park is going to be. Adoption by one organization does not preclude adoption of another area. That doesn't seem like that would go under the one-time event. And then I'm going to go to the next page. And when you have the Good Neighbor Day recognition.
Mm-hmm.
I would suggest something that I saw today when I was out at the Walmart. It wa, I don't believe it's Walmart that's doing it, but the median, when you drive into the center and then the backside of where the, um, oh, it's a stereo sound place right there, in the grass, they have these signs that have just appeared, little signs in the yard, and they, stuck in the grass. And it says, "Citizen cleaned, please respect your community."
Oh, nice.
I'm not sure who put that there, if anybody knows, but I just noticed it today and I go to the Walmart a lot, so. I mean, it, it just, and I don't believe it's Walmart because it wasn't anywhere else on their property. But I think for the Good Neighbor Day, we should do some kind of a little sign like that. And I, you know, just, it's a little yard sign and.
They're not allowed.
You can't do that?
Little yard signs aren't allowed.
On city property?
I thought we banned them.
Is that true?
I believe so.
So we can't do that?
Well, we can't tell everybody else that they can't and then we do it.
Well, I, and I'm agreeing with you. I'm, I'm going to get.
Yeah, the little yard signs you can't have, the ones that they put up all the way you, when you drive down Hatch Road, stop, eat here, whatever. Can't, you can't have those. Those aren't allowed.
So then further in here where we talk about a sign, then we can't really have it, our, on our city property?
I think, I think Mayor Vera, you're correct. The commercial-type signs like that, I think that when you talk more of a community-oriented sign, an informational sign, I think that those could be allowed if we wanted to have something that announced the, um, the group or the organization that maybe cleaned a park or a certain area.
Well, I know, but I just, I don't think they are now though, right? We'd have to make.
No, those would be okay now. It's the commercial, the commercial reading of those, uh, those yard-type signs that talk about commercial and advertisement that are not allowed. It's just similar to the fireworks signs for that campaign. Those are yard signs. Those are permitted.
Okay, so we could do something like that.
A temporary sign, would you be fine with, or would you want a permanent sign for one day?
No, 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 because it would change and it would just be out there for a little bit. This is the one for.
No, I just wanted to check.
The Good Neighbor.
So, I mean, the Adopt a Park would be a permanent sign if, as they'd agree to ten or twelve cleanups.
Well, that's where I'm going to go next. So that was my suggestion for the Good Neighbor. Adopt a Park, again, I, I don't agree with only four or more cleanups. I believe it should be monthly. And I don't think it should be, we do ten months out of the year. It's monthly. And I think that anyone who's willing to adopt a park is going to be willing to do that. And I think that they will also be able to commit to a year.
Okay.
Okay? And on, again, on the Adopt a Park sponsorship, it says, "Basic requirements." It says for Good Neighbor Day, but it should say Adopt a Park sponsorship.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that just needs to be changed. Cleanup will be done as agreed upon between the department and the individuals for a designated date. And it says to be set by a Series staff member. Well, I believe the people that are org, that are adopting a park, they can tell us what their day is and the day that they're going to be out there. And we're going to work with them. We're not going to give them a date that they have to be out there. And it says cleanup may be more often if it is, if it is determined that needs to be stricken if they're going to be out there once a month.
Okay.
And then we go down again to meet with the adopting organization at the Adopted Park site at the start of the sponsoring period. I believe that should, could be done during orientation. It cuts down on staff time. And it says, um, let's see, what else? Under application, they need to submit their application at least thirty days prior to their first scheduled cleanup project. But I believe at that time, they could do all of their proposed dates for the year, their once-a-month dates for the year. And it's, there's something that said, I don't know where I marked it at now, but it said something about the, the lead person had to be eighteen and they needed to be, it, it made it, it didn't make it sound like they needed to be out there on the day that they're working. And they, I believe they need to be there at the day they're working, not just, I don't know where I saw that, but I did.
Okay, we can make that adjustment.
Improvement donation, it says Series Public Spaces, and I believe it's all about parks, so I think it should be changed to Parks.
Okay.
One, one question on that. You had previously referenced medians in that sense, so you don't want to consider that at this point? In the previous conversation, there was a conversation about medians in other public areas, for example.
But now we're call, but now we're calling it Adopt a Park.
That was the concept. Again, even like the Community Center wouldn't be a park, but the landscaping beds, the Community Center, could be something considered under that with that language of public spaces.
Okay, that, that would be okay then. I didn't think about that.
I don't think we want to get into street medians because of risk. I'm going to turn to Bettina real quick.
And that's why we, we stuck, we, we went away from that, but I just would use in that an example, as we talked about, there's other public spaces. And the obvious example is here at the Community Center. Legion Hall would be another one, but there would be a public space rather than.
Well, as long as we're not going to abuse it and have them do.
We'll just keep it Parks, yeah.
Well, no, I, I think it's okay if it's the Community Center, but I really prefer that it be Parks because, no, I think we need to leave it as Parks. It's the Adopt, Adopt a Park.
Because we do may have interest in a group that wants to adopt the Community Center, the medians around here, so will we not have that, Councilman Rhino? As they're interested? We have a couple of groups that may be interested.
Then wouldn't they just come to you directly anyway instead of the Adopt a Park?
Well, I think the goal is to get that recognition, um, if they're going to put the twelve meeting dates out. So I think that would be part of their goal if it was a church or a soccer group. But I do have some interest potentially down the road that they would want to take pride in the Community Center as this is their meeting place for their regular meetings and stuff.
Well, I, I guess I would look at that if they wanted to donate their time to do that, that you could come to the council and say we want to recognize them.
Okay, so they want to be part of the Adopt a Park Program?
No, I think it still needs to just be called Adopt a Park.
Okay.
That's where, that's where we started, but I, I can't, I can't find that one thing I was telling you about that lead worker needed to be.
Oh, I have a note to go back to the lead worker and make that change. Um, so I'm going to refer back to City Manager Wells on how to move forward. If we can adopt this tonight with some changes, I can work with, you know, adopting the overall program and I can work out the details with Councilman Rhino. If any other councilmembers have any questions too, I apologize.
I, I think there's further people who need to.
Oh, I, I know. I just forgot. I'm sorry.
Those are, those are all my questions, though.
Are there any other comments before I open it up to the public? Okay, at this time, I will open it up to the public. Anyone that would like to address the council on this item?
Nobody addressed the liability, like if we let the, you know, somebody use a city shovel and they go to use that shovel and it breaks and they fall down, they break their leg.
It's in here.
Yeah, is, is it in there? Okay, okay.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Well, I would like to approve the Adopt a Park Program with all of my suggested changes.
Second.
Could you just kind of hit the highlights of all those?
Would it be, I mean, is there?
Because you, you had a lot there.
Yeah. I would suggest.
Because it's a big thing to me, okay?
Yeah, my, my suggestion would be to give us direction to bring it back. That way you get one last check of making sure that we got all of the issues addressed. I don't think a two-week delay is that significant, so.
And I'll just keep my notes.
If you could give your notes to Mr. Lor and that way he can, um, incorporate those changes and then get, give the full council a read of the rough draft.
Stickies, okay?
Okay.
That would allow us to, I, I'd rather get it right, and I don't think two weeks is going to hurt us if we get it right and bring it back to you on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, that.
Perfect. I'll sit down with you this week and just go over your notes with you to make sure we get all those changes.
So as a new business item, there was a motion and a second, so.
But you can amend, you want to amend your motion to continue the item?
That would be the easiest. Would you just continue it to the next meeting?
I would like to do that. Thank you.
So you amended it?
I'm amending it to.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to amend, or excuse me, to, um, what's the word?
Bring this back. Continue, continue this item to June twenty-fourth.
Continue the item, thank you.
Yep.
And a second, so can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and Board Member Condit.
Aye.
Council and Board Member De Rosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino.
Yes.
Council and Board Member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairperson Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Okay, item number thirteen, Resolution number two thousand nineteen dash six-six, authorizing the execution and delivery of a two thousand twenty water installment agreement, two thousand twenty wastewater installment agreement and escrow agreements, and approving the execution and delivery of certain documents in connection there, there within and certain other matters. Ms. Dean?
Thank you, Mayor Vera. Um, we are in the process of getting, uh, the rate secured for the refunding of the bonds. And tonight, uh, the direct purchase agreements will be, will be approved and then, um, we'll ask you to sign those after they're finalized. The other documents, we're just approving as to form, and the actual sale will not occur until March of two thousand twenty. Um, we can no longer, under state law, refund in advance of, of bonds coming due. I have Rick Brandis and Reed Gleyer, um, Brandis Tallman, and Straddling, our Bond Counsel, and our advisors here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Does council have any questions on this item?
I don't.
Think you got an easy night.
Well, the Warriors are ahead, so we're happy.
How can they stay ahead? Um, so at this time, um, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll see if anyone in the public has any questions. And if not, then we'll, um, we'll bring it back for us for direction. At this time, does anyone have any questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none, or seeing none, excuse me, I will bring it back to the council for either more discussion or direction.
Move to adopt Resolution two thousand nineteen sixty-six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and Board Member Condit.
Aye.
Council and Board Member De Rosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino.
Yes.
Council and Board Member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairperson Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. Moving to item number fourteen, Resolution number two thousand nineteen dash oh-one, Series Financing Authority, authorizing the execution and delivery of escrow agreements for the two thousand nine water and wastewater bond issues and approving the execution and delivery of certain documents in connection there within and certain other matters. Dean?
Thank you, Mayor. It's all the, the same information, it's just a separate bond issue.
Okay, this time, does anyone on the council have any questions? All right, um, I won't call you back up because there doesn't seem to be any questions. So, and does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on this item.
Move to approve Resolution number two thousand nineteen oh-one.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and Board Member Condit.
Aye.
Council and Board Member De Rosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino.
Yes.
Council and Board Member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairperson Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Okay, moving to the public hearing, item number fifteen, public hearing to consider Resolution number two thousand nineteen dash sixty-seven, approving the engineer's annual report confirming the assessment and ordering the levy for the nineteen eighty-seven landscaping and lighting district for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Shep, do you?
Thank you, Mayor. So the city hired NBS Consulting to assist with the preparation of the annual levy of the lighting and landscape district and to prepare the annual report. And, um, citywide, the total assessments, um, went up one point fifty-nine percent. And, um, I'll open it up to any questions.
All right. Is there anyone on the council that has any questions on this item? Is there anyone on the public that has any question on this item? Okay, hearing none. I'll bring it back to the council for discussion or direction.
Move to adopt Resolution two thousand nineteen sixty-seven.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and Board Member Condit.
Aye.
Council and Board Member De Rosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino.
Yes.
Council and Board Member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairperson Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Okay, item number sixteen, public hearing to consider Resolution number two thousand nineteen dash six-eight, adopting the annual budget for the city of Series for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year, beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and res, and Resolution number two thousand nineteen dash sixty-nine, adopting the appropriations limitations for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor Vera. Members of the city council, it's my pleasure this evening to present the final budget for fiscal year nineteen twenty for your consideration this evening. So most of the information I present this evening will be very similar, um, to what we presented at the workshop on May sixteenth. Um, so the information has just been updated with the most recent information between May sixteenth and, uh, the preparation of this report, which is, uh, last week. So grand scheme of things, the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget is pretty much on track. We do expect to add a slight amount to the, uh, fund balance this year, but you can see for the most part, uh, we started with a beginning balance of four-point-five million and will end right there around four-point-five million. To note, um, as we noted before, one aspect of the budget during the fiscal year, we did make a pretty significant adjustment to the budget with the purchase of the fire apparatus, which is about two-point-eight million dollars. And that is reflected in both the revenue and the expenditure. So big picture, uh, revenues for two thousand eighteen, nineteen come in above budget. Again, with that adjustment for the fire department, um, expenses are slightly above budget as well. Um, we do expect to add slightly to the fund balances. I'll show you in a minute. It's about seventy-ish thousand dollars and that's our, um, best estimate based on the information we have to date with about a little less than a month left of expenditures. So as we jump into fiscal year nineteen twenty, all in all, uh, from a budget perspective. So as we jump into fiscal year nineteen twenty, all in all, from a budget perspective, our budget is improving. From my perspective, it is a whole lot better budget presented this year than it was the first budget I presented back in two thousand fourteen, which is a very, very different state that we were in at that point in time. So the revenues are growing, but we are seeing expenditure growth as we've pragmatically and very carefully with council's direction tried to add back to those items that were cut and eliminated during the fiscal crisis that most cities in the state of California endured post the Great Recession. With those increases, we've seen some changes of the last year that with the adoption of MOUs for all six bargaining group, bargaining groups. So those increases are reflected for this next fiscal year as well in the future. We have added some additional positions both last year and proposing to add some additional positions this year. Retirement costs continue to be a challenge, health insurance is always something we keep a close eye on. Those are items that are reflected in the budget, again, better position this year than we were last year. So just review of the process, council's very well aware of this process of how it starts internally, February, March, working through that process to get to a draft that was presented in essence, May sixteenth, revised based on council direction for your consideration this evening. So big picture, graph that I've shown for the last five years showing our revenue and expenditures, so revenues in blue, expenditures in red. Going back to two thousand six, two thousand seven, you can see that big drop off there in two thousand ten, eleven with a steady increase and then you can see there in fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, there towards the very right-hand side, that, that spike there explained with the fire apparatus purchase and expenditure. But all in all, a very nice picture to see versus what we've seen in the past, that we are seeing revenue growth, something encouraging. Same information as the last graph, this one is just broken down, revenue, blue line, it's a little different scale, but breaking down the salaries and benefit costs relative to the other expenditures that we have. And jumping into some details of a few of our key revenue aspects, so again, sales tax is one of our larger revenue pieces, a little over thirty percent of our general fund revenue comes from sales tax and you can see, you know, the low point in sales tax in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven to where we're projecting this year, about six point eight million dollars, a pretty significant increase. We're seeing both that increase year over year and some steady growth reflective of a number of changes within the economy. And again, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me and ask your questions as we go along. Another aspect of our revenue, about eighteen percent, secured property tax. Interesting to note the, the lag in property tax receipts relative to the low point here, so fiscal year twelve, thirteen. So as the economy crashed and the housing market crashed, the change in assessed value was kind of delayed on how it affected most people. And you can see that lag, that this year we're finally getting back above the previous peak from fiscal year seven, eight and we're now seeing a peak number, you know, somewhere in that two thousand, sorry, two point three million dollar range. So that, that lag is reflective of how the property tax assessments are, are levied. So in essence, the county levies property tax in January for a tax bill that is mailed out in, in August, you pay in December and May. So your last payment is reflective of an assessment that's almost eighteen years old, or eighteen months old, sorry. So there's quite a lag in that assessed value. The other major component is motor vehicle and license, motor vehicle and lieu. Again, this is tied to property tax, so you'll notice a very similar shape to the property tax graph. And the last of the major revenue sources are the three development agreements that we have for cannabis. We do expect to bring in a little over two point three million dollars this year. This is just revenue from the, the DAs, the development agreements, it is not reflective of any sales tax that we receive from those businesses. So for the budget that we've put together for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty, the Uni Services is the company that we contract with that provides us the estimate for our sales tax, obviously the biggest component of our budget. They provide kind of three numbers, a pessimistic, a most likely, and an optimistic. We choose the most likely, that has proven to be very reliable in the past. We do look forward to their information and they update us quarterly on how things are trending, so that is something we watch very closely. You know, one thing that we are very carefully watching is the, you know, the growth of our economy here locally as well as if, any future recession. So if anyone was paying attention to the governor's budget message that he just released in May, he did indicate that they're looking at a potential recession, twenty twenty is what he was indicating. But that is obviously something that everyone's watching, no one can predict or know when that's going to happen, but it's something to be cautious and cognizant of as that could affect, you know, our future and how our budget is put together. So something to be very, very aware to those, how those things change. We are in California, period of over ten years now of positive economic growth, so one of the longer cycles that we've seen in California. So last bullet point there, as we'll show on the forecast, the development agreements, the original term of those agreements, we will be getting into the third year of the agreement with the first one, it's just, just starting this year, will be the third year, sorry. And as a result, we do, do need to renegotiate the terms of that agreement, I have initiated conversations with all three of the development agreements to extend the terms out significant, in their line, in their minds, significant years to get to the, get past the original three-year terms for each of those agreements, so that is something we'll be working on this fiscal year. So just a couple items of update that we provided from the May sixteenth draft that was presented. So we added the capital improvement program into the budget, that is the program and projects that we went through the planning commission for approval and are now included in the budget for your consideration. Based on the conversation with the council, the secretary position, and we'll get into that in a little bit more detail, that was added to the draft budget and then the final edits of the draft budget were cleaned up and finalized for your presentation in that nice thick binder that you have there for your review and you can keep it if you'd like. So here's the, the big picture numbers, again, yellow for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, showing the beginning balance of four point five million, revenues of twenty-four point three, expenditures twenty-four point four. I'll say essentially balanced, there is a slight negative balance there of about eighty-six thousand dollars. We can talk about that in a little bit more detail here shortly. But do showing both the eighteen percent general fund floor for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen as well as fiscal year nineteen, twenty.
Question?
Sure.
Looking at your forecast, you know, as we project out, how can we project out or where can we look at? So when we get to twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three, that our reserves don't drop below our eighteen percent threshold?
The primary difference there that you're looking at is the development agreements. So what's shown there in the forecast is the DAs for cannabis show ending in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one.
So are we current-
As soon as we get new development agreements, we will update this forecast to reflect the terms of those agreements.
Are we currently in negotiations or talks with them?
Yes, we've initiated those talks.
And how are those going along?
So far, so good. We do expect to be a significant term increase with all three businesses.
Okay.
Okay, any questions? We'll dig into a few of the details, just high level on Measure H. This is the information that's, we presented again at the budget workshop. The overall forecast, we did make a, a few adjustments here based on some comments we received from council. For fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, I updated the information, we had just kind of left it as a total. So I updated the information there and took the projection of each line item at two percent from the baseline, but excluded some of the one-time capital, just to give a little better estimate of what, what two thousand twenty-one might look like just for where that fund balance might end. But the grand scheme of things, as I mentioned at the workshop, we saw a very significant increase in sales tax revenue for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen. So you can see there at the top line, about a sixteen percent increase in sales tax, driven by a couple of things. One, cannabis, that sales tax is taxable and that does assist the Measure H and the very, very strong car sales. So the way that works is a special tax, a new car sold anywhere, that the vehicle's registered here in San Slaus County, we get that half cent. So a strong new car sales directly benefits us, especially in the Measure H. That is not true in our general sales tax, but for a special tax, it is reflective and we get that special tax. So that is something that is significant to note as we saw a very, very significant growth estimated for the fiscal year eighteen, nineteen. So in summary, the, of the big picture, the total draft expenditures, twenty-four and a half million. Personnel cost, consistent with past years, about seventy-three percent. When you put it all together, Measure H and the general fund, twenty-eight point four million. Public safety, using those categories, is still about eighty percent, plus minus of the general fund and Measure H. Key positions change, or what we look at is being able to increase the level of service for our community. Summarized here, the two police officers, two dispatchers, one records clerk that's in the police department, senior parks maintenance worker, one facilities maintenance worker, senior civil engineer and associate engineer or senior engineering tech and the, and the secretary position. As mentioned, that would be one full-time secretary position in code enforcement and one full-time position in the fire department. So what we did, based on council direction, is we made an adjustment there in the fire department. They were previously budgeting thirty-two thousand dollars for administrative support to help with a contract with the City of Modesto for training. That is expected to come to this council at the next meeting. There was thirty-two thousand dollars, we eliminated that thirty-two thousand dollars with the full-time add of the secretary position. They would then be able to provide that administrative support for that training program, so it was an offset. Not one for one, but just made for a small increase relative to that position. So that is included in the, in the budget for your consideration. Questions?
Well, I'm looking at your continuing challenges and it seems like it's every budget year, but we never do anything about it and it seems like at some point it needs to be reflected in the general fund because it's a negative balance, correct?
So we'll, we'll talk about the community center first, so Fund two seventy-five this year, for probably the closest that we've ever been, the negative balance is only projected to increase by about eight to ten thousand dollars. So, you know, started the year at one point six million, we're gonna be just a little over one point six. We did narrow the gap significantly over the past three or four years. So when we started this conversation, the general fund, I'm sorry, the community center fund was going negative about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars a year. So the changes that we've made over the past three or four years have narrowed that gap significantly. Now, we are projecting a negative balance, again, for fiscal year nineteen, twenty, around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. However, as we've talked about, we do have several things in the works that we do hope to be able to close that gap and get that very close to being balanced. Now, the attack for how to address that negative balance, that's a much bigger conversation that we will hope to have this year with the council on how you'd like to tackle that. So we saw it as a two-step process, one, minimizing the gap on an annual basis, getting that down to zero and then looking to how do we attack that negative balance.
So our negative balance this year is projected to be one point six million?
Correct.
And next year, one point seven million?
Correct.
So what would happen with those three funds if we, if they really were in the general fund, which is where they should be? The negative balance, what, what would that do to the eighteen percent we're showing? It would really be truthfully less than that, our reserve.
Correct.
So it would be-
I don't have a math-
Ms. Dean, do you know that, if we had those three negative balances, what it would be?
They're, they're not all the same in terms of negative balance, right? So community center, so if you took the one point six million dollars out of the community center and took that from the four point six, so you'd have a fund balance of three million. Yeah, so you drop it down to probably twenty-one, you're gonna be down around twelve percent, I'm guessing math-wise.
So, so why do-
In the community center, cause let me, let me talk about those other ones separately. So can we table that for just a second?
Sure.
Okay, so gas tax, so the gas tax primarily funds our streets operations. So those gas tax revenues, we show them really as one line on, but there's actually a four or five different line items that roll up into that gas tax. What we've recognized this year that we need to make a change and we'll be doing this over the course of the fiscal year is in the past, we've done a lot of maintenance, capital improvement type work with our streets crew repairing sidewalks and those type of things. But now that we have a funding source with Measure L, we need to move some of those things that were considered maintenance that can now be done with capital improvements, i.e., there is a whole category of Measure L that can be dedicated to completing and fixing sidewalks and things that help pedestrian movement and bicycle movement. So there's a shift that we can do to help offset that structural challenge. So we're projecting, as the budget is put together right now, of ending the two fifty-five fund about negative a hundred and three thousand dollars. Mr. Davis and myself are working to minimize that with the expenditures, and we basically have cut off the expenditures of everything but salaries to minimize that, so we don't hit a hundred and three thousand. We've additionally made some other changes to try to get that fund balance in two fifty-five to be closer to zero. Again, it's projected in the budget right now to be about fifty thousand dollars negative. We're confident we can get that to zero by the end of this fiscal year nineteen, twenty.
How can you get it to zero, where, where does the money come from, I don't understand that.
Expenditures, reduced expenditures out of that.
So we can reduce the expenditures that much? I know Mr. Thomas said that when we have another vacancy, maybe he cannot fill it and that would re-relieve some of the stress on the fund.
Right, salaries are only one aspect.
So if we don't need that person, why do we have it?
Again, salaries are only one aspect of the budget, right? So you've got salaries, you've got all the other expenditures, so salaries, the one hundreds, two hundreds, three hundreds, those are areas where we can make reductions and adjustments to ensure that we don't exceed that, that fund balance.
And the traffic control systems that we have throughout the city, the twenty-eight energized traffics, signalized intersections, we're spending anywhere from fifty to seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars a year just in cabinets that can be pushed off next year as well. And that reduces that.
It can be pushed off what, to next year?
Right.
But then we have to deal with it next year.
We can, we push it to the Measure L expenditures.
Put it to capital projects. So some of that's maintenance can be done as a capital project as a, as an improvement.
As a CIP?
Correct, correct, correct.
But a CIP comes from, where does that money come?
Measure L.
Measure, all of the CIP is gonna be measure, no?
It's one funding source for these type of programs.
Okay.
So there's four categories in Measure L, so Measure L has regional streets and roads, bike and pedestrians, mobility issues, which is really signals, and then the regional projects. So those are the categories that we have in Measure L.
Yeah, and along those lines, this is kind of a sidebar. Received a letter today, all of the members of the COG and there was a grand jury investigation to make sure that the Measure L funding was being spent and so they picked three cities to look at out of all of us, Turlock, Patterson and Series. And if, if I read it correctly, all, all of us are implementing the program the way we're supposed to, but I noticed we were about sixty-eight thousand dollars of ours didn't, we didn't meet all of the, the, the funding, so.
Got money to spend.
So there's still money there that we hadn't used, so I, I believe they're correct that we'll be able to utilize that additional funding for other projects as we move them from the, the gas tax provision over into the, the Measure L stuff. So that, that's how I read the, the, the grand jury's findings, so.
There was a positive, positive review, my first experience with a grand jury that was, was positive, so that was, that was nice, that we are on the right track, but there's, there's also recognition that we're at that kind of limit of what we have running through that gas tax. We don't anticipate those revenues to, to expand. We do see them flattening out, so we do need to make some changes in that. The expenditure side of that, now that we have a revenue that we feel is more fixed. So that's the gas tax, so then two ninety-two, as we heard-
Well, let's go back to two seventy-five and that one point seven million. Why isn't that shown in, as, as part of the general fund when it's a negative balance?
I would defer to Ms. Dean on how that's been done for the past ten years.
Well, I mean, because the true record keeping, it seems to me, would be that it's negative, so it should play into our whole budget and show up as our budget, right? But then that's going to show that our reserves are less than the eighteen percent, correct?
It's been done this way longer than I've been here, so.
Well, but if we're gonna be doing accurate, and I think I brought this up previously, why we didn't do that and I don't remember what you told me last year, why we didn't do that.
I don't recall the question last year, but again, I defer to Ms. Dean on the, the financial accounting side of that for the past ten years.
Well, I wasn't here for most of it either, but the general, someone decided that the community center could be self-sufficient and they set up a zone fund and they initially thought, as Mr. Wells has said in our strategic planning meetings, that there, there was a planned deficit for a period of about five years, I think it was, and then it should start leveling out and while it hasn't, it's been longer than that. We're finally, as he said, getting to a point where we might be able to level it out. But my contention has always been, as I've been, since I've been director, is recreation is a function of the general fund and this is a balance that truly does- and this is a balance that truly does belong in the general fund. So you're...
So why hasn't it been in the general fund? You can't answer that, it's just been...
Council has, well, the conversation has always been, we're going to deal with it next year. And we haven't gotten to that point where we deal with it. There was talk, I think, not this last strategic planning session we had, but the previous one to that, where we discussed potentially loaning money from one of the other funds, I think we discussed sewer fund, to zero that out, and then we could, we could work towards paying that off, have the general fund pay it off over a period of time. But we've never, we've never approached it since then.
So is that something that, we don't have the money in the sewer fund to do something like that, do we? Because aren't we paying for the fire apparatus out of the sewer fund?
We did loan the general fund two point eight million for the purchase of the fire apparatus. And so the general fund does now have a debt of about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars a year for the fire apparatus. So at this point, I wouldn't recommend another loan from the general fund. Mr. Davis has plans for CIP projects within the sewer fund, so I don't, I don't know that there are revenues available to do that. And also, we have to take into consideration our rate studies and the things that we have said we're going to use the money in the sewer and water funds and not stray from that as well. But you're, you are correct in saying that it is a general fund obligation, and if you did move that to the general fund, it would be somewhere around ten, eleven percent reserve if we were to actually recognize that. It's not something that the auditor has written us up for, but the auditor has made mention of it several times in his audits.
So it would be a decision of the council to start showing that as part of the general fund rather than making it look like we have more money than we really do, because we really do have that obligation as a negative balance, correct?
Yes, the, the way we present it, it looks like it's just a separate fund, that's correct. And it is a function of the general, recreation, police, and fire are typically functions of the general fund. They are, they're part of the services the community wants, and the general fund supports them. There aren't special revenues that typically support this. In our case, we have Measure H, which is a special revenue that helps support our police department, but it's a general fund revenue source.
So we're on the hook for it, even though we don't, even though if you look at our general fund, it doesn't really reflect that?
Yes.
So are there any other, if we can't do water or sewer, are there any other funds that we could borrow from and pay like a low interest rate like we did for the sewer to pay it off? And so we don't, then we don't do anything, we don't lower our reserves down to ten percent by doing that, correct? Or would we still lower it if we borrowed the money from another fund?
No, it'd be, it would be recorded as a debt in the general fund, and then we would just have the obligation to pay it back every, as we're doing for the fire apparatus, paying it back annually. I don't know what the CIP plans are for the sewer fund. I know about what the balances are in there, so I don't know if that's, that's something that we could consider. But I do think it is something the council needs to address, and sooner rather than later.
Because I think since I've been on the council, we've, we've, there's always been a discussion, maybe it's only me discussing it, about that negative balance, and it really isn't a true reflection of... To me, it's not a true reflection. It's kind of like it's hidden on its, I mean, to me, it is.
It's not hidden to us, that's for sure.
Well, no, it's not hidden to you, but it's almost like we've put it aside, and it's out of sight, out of mind. If you looked at, if you looked at our reserves, then that eighteen percent is really not an accurate percentage because we have this pretty big negative.
The council could set a policy on what that timeframe is as well. You, you could decide that you want that negative balance to be gone in, just picking them out of there, ten years, so that on an annual basis, we're going to dedicate a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars from the general fund to pay that debt down.
But we're still not going to show it as a general fund, and bec...
Yeah, you would, under, under that scenario, so just using that as an example. The council could say, we're going to dedicate, just use around number a hundred thousand dollars per year to pay down that debt. And that would show as an expenditure of the general fund to pay the Two Seventy-Fives. It would be a transfer from Fund One Hundred to Fund Two Seventy-Five, minimizing that deficit. What I would suggest is, we're going to bring an item to you in July relative to another funding opportunity here that will help get the annual deficit more balanced. And then we have a secondary item coming for other revenue ideas within this community center, and we have that conversation as part of that big picture to make an educated and informed decision of how you'd like to handle the two, two aspects. Again, the annual amount and then the, the deficit. There are a few other options out there as well, but I think it's better in context of the full operation of the community center, but be happy to get into those if you'd like.
But again, you're saying it's a council decision or policy if we want it to be shown as part of the general fund versus a special fund?
Yeah, because the previous dedication, previous direction from council was adopting Two Seventy-Five as the community center fund, and it was to be run, in essence, as an enterprise fund, separate fund. We have endeavored over the past three or four years to narrow that gap to zero, and we were pretty darn close to that number this year, and now we do feel it's appropriate to deal with that balance.
How are we almost to zero if it's one point, we're negative one point seven?
On an annual basis.
Oh, an annual basis, okay, well...
But there's, there's two aspects, right? I mean, if you continue to dig yourself in a hole, you've got to stop digging the hole first before you figure out how to fill it.
Right, but this year, we're projected to be a negative one point six, and obviously, we're not reducing it if next year it's a one point seven. That's not a reduction.
Again, we have an item that's going to be coming to you, the first meeting in July, that will help minimize that gap.
Well, it seems like it should have come before the, before we even had the discussion on the budget.
We would have loved to, but we were not able to get there.
Well, I, I think as a council, we need to show transparency, and it should be part of the general fund.
Well, I, again, I don't disagree with you, but I don't like the words "show transparency." Nobody's trying to hide anything from anybody here.
But it looks like it to me.
No, because how do you know that, that Fund Two Seventy-Five wasn't set up because we were dealing with redevelopment funds? I don't know why Sheila set it up, but that doesn't mean that it was done as non-transparent. We talk about it every year, so if we want to fund it, then we make the decision, we fund it. I don't know why we're, we're, we're trying to say that they're playing the shell game and trying to hide it, they're not.
Well, I didn't say they were playing a shell game.
Well, you said transparency.
Well, maybe you're, take transparency differently than I do.
Well, typically transparency means either you show it or you don't, so you're saying that we're not showing it.
Okay, well, then we're not showing it, I don't believe, so...
Well, it's in here, so if we want to move it, it's not their decision, it's ours. If we want to move it, then we need to stop beating the dead horse and move it.
And I suggested that we, as a council, need to look at moving it, that's what I said.
Perfect, that's what we need to do. I mean, we don't need to keep rehashing this. It is a liability. If we want to move it from one fund to another and pay it back with the general fund, we can do that. We have the direction. We don't need to keep saying, why are you doing this? They're doing what we tell them to do. So let's stop beating the dead horse.
Well, it sounds good.
If you want to move it, make a recommendation to move it, we'll make a decision, and then we'll go from there.
I believe I already did make that recommendation.
No, I second that.
Well, I, I don't know that...
If you're making a motion, I will second it.
Well, I don't know if we make a motion on individual things, but Councilmember Klein has his little light going.
Councilmember Klein?
Well, I, I do understand, excuse me, the direction Vice Mayor Rhino is going with this, and I think that I do agree that that's probably something that needs to be brought up in the short future, and, you know, not with adopting this, this budget. But my new, my new question is, Fund Two Seventy-Five, with all the revenues we get from the community center, where do those revenues go to? Do they go to the Two Seventy-Five, or do they go to the general fund account?
They go to Two Seventy-Five. General fund, the Two Seventy-Five revenues are about a hundred-and-fifty thou, just using fiscal year eighteen-nineteen, about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in revenues. We're expecting expenditures of about a hundred-and-fifty-eight, so that's the difference.
So they, they, they do go back into the Two Seventy-Five, that was my question, okay?
All right, so we'll jump to Two Ninety-Two?
One second.
Yep, go ahead.
Sorry. You know, part of the, the thing, I've been here for a long time with you, Mayor, and, you know, we've always talked about it. We always said that maybe we'll get together and we'll, we'll try to see what the options are. You know, there was always that great hope that this beautiful building that cost whatever that millions were was, was going to be, you know, not a cash cow. Obviously, it's been that for quite a while. I don't think we necessarily move the money today, or even make a motion to move the money today. I think we get together at the next council meeting and have it be an item that we're going to study. How do we want to do this? Because, hey, and I know I said this in other council meetings, other budget times, that if we need to keep the, that you guys want the reserves at eighteen percent, let's take the money out right now and make it twelve percent reserves, and that's what we're going to have for the next year. I'm, I'm just saying. So, I mean, there's so many different ways that you could do this, and again, I, I don't think that we just kind of rush into it, but act as soon as possible, because that's something that you really want to do, okay? So that's, that's just a thought for us.
Well, I, I, I agree with you that I think we should have a separate discussion on it, because with all due respect to some of the council members that are new here, there are implications with just dropping the reserves down to twelve percent. If you remember, there are cash flow issues, and we've discussed those before. So as long as everyone is aware of what it means to just wipe it over and swipe it from one bucket to the other, as long as everybody's okay with that and understands that, then that's, that's great. I mean, it, you're right, it is, it, this is a liability that we have on the books that we need to deal with. And, and I'm agreeing with you. I mean, I have no problem dropping the reserves to twelve percent, and we wipe it out right now, and that's fine, we can do that. I don't know that that's probably the most prudent thing to do, given the other challenges that that creates with, again, cash flow issues until we would build it back up again. But I think we need to have a discussion that looks at all options. You know, do we have other, other assets within the city that could be liquidated, that could help offset that? I mean, there, there are plenty of other things that we can look at, but, but yes, it's something that we have to deal with. I think the first step that is important is that the annual deficit doesn't, if we can, if we can get that revenue neutral, then the hole doesn't keep getting bigger, it just, it's, we're dealing with, with two things. One, you know, clearing that initial debt that we have, and then, and then stopping the, the negative flow. So, I mean, my, my suggestion would be that we address it like you had mentioned, Councilmember Drossit, that we bring it back as a separate discussion.
Okay, any, any further on that? Okay, so the last piece, Fund Two Ninety-Two, lighting and landscaping districts. So as Mr. Padilla mentioned this evening, so lighting and landscaping districts have been in place for many years. What we are finding is the annual increase, and so just for a reminder, those annual increases are set by an inflation factor that was built into the original documents as they were adopted over the past twenty years. And that inflation factor has not adequately kept up with the cost of maintaining those facilities. So we've got a deficit problem in the operation of those Two Ninety-Two funds in that it's costing more to maintain those districts than the revenue that's coming in. So we're left with two options. One, cutting the level of service down to match the revenues that are coming in, or do a Two Eighteen process to raise those revenues, to cover the actual costs. So that is something that we are starting the process on, between Daniel, myself, and Mr. Davis. We'll be working on creating and bringing to council those options for the consideration of getting the Fund Two Ninety-Two to be balanced, both revenue expenditures. So it will likely be a Two Eighteen process, where we look at the council to authorize us to go to a Two Eighteen, where you ask the voters to increase the tax on themselves. Most agencies struggle with that, and the support for those from the residents is generally difficult to obtain. But we have to make that change, because that, that fund, we cannot allow to go negative. Again, we balanced it this year, and it's basically at a zero between revenues and expenditure, forecasting for this year to be a negative number for nineteen-twenty as well. Any questions?
Yes. I asked Mr. Padilla about contract services, and he said that there, he's estimating we will only use ninety-one thousand four hundred and nine when the current budget is two hundred and forty-two, one fifty-four. And in the proposed, this proposed budget, we're only budgeting one ninety-two-five, which is a reduction of about fifty thousand over last year's budget. So my question is, if we're only using ninety-one thousand four hundred and nine this year, then why do we need to budget a hundred and ninety-two-five for this year, if we've only used ninety-one?
Yeah, so Mr. Padilla and I spoke about this, and so recognize that contract services is made up of eight different funds. So the general fund is five thousand dollars. Two Fifty-One, which is public impact fees, road, is twenty thousand. Parks impact fees, twenty thousand. Two Seventy-One, which is Measure L, forty thousand. Twenty-five hundred for Two Seventy-Four, which is non-motorized LTF funds, which you basically pay for striping or bike paths. Fifty thousand for Five Twenty-Seven, which is water. Fifty thousand for Five Sixty-Seven, which is sewer. And then five thousand for Five Seventy-One, which is transit. So those total numbers of a hundred and ninety-two thousand, a couple of those items are somewhat placeholders based on projects. You know, the first eighty thousand dollars there are project-related. So if there are CIP projects where we need some additional funding source for matches, generally, for match funds on grant opportunities, that's where it normally comes from. So we could reduce that down, but it doesn't change the general fund numbers, because there's only five thousand dollars that, out of that line item that's hit to the general fund.
So if we're hiring two additional engineering positions, that doesn't have an effect on any of these contract services? They're not related to any of those people?
Correct.
Councilmember Klein?
So I have a question, you know, and Toby, you know, I, I sent these questions to you, but I, I'm, I'm sort of a little bit confused at this. You know, on page fourteen and page three, we've got frozen positions on page fourteen that says there's police, there's three police officers' positions that are frozen. Yet back on page three, it states that we're unfreezing two police officers, and then in the next point, it states that we continue to freeze two police officers. So which, you know, you answered my question, so which is it? Do we have two frozen, three frozen, none frozen, or do we have a total of one frozen?
Three frozen.
Okay, but with the conversation and, and the answers you sent me was because of two thousand and thirteen, so how long do they stay on the books? Because if you turn around and you look at things...
You can wipe them all out today if you'd like.
Well, because you look at, you look at what we've done, done to PD, we've had a deputy police chief. Well, that's nowhere in our, we're, nowhere in, in our, because, because that was eliminated.
The captain replaced the police, deputy chief police chief.
Okay, but, but that's why I'm asking, how long do these stay on the books? You know, I'd like to talk to, you know, Chief Collins to find out, you know, you hear we're fully staffed, and yet...
We're fully staffed on the basis of the budget that you approve.
So you have positions from two thousand and twelve and thirteen, okay? We hired more, more personnel. So we froze five positions, we froze seven positions back in two thousand and thirteen. How long do these stay in, in the parameters of, of, of the budget?
Again, you can eliminate them this evening, that, that, they're, they're paper. All there are is paper positions. They don't exist until you authorize them. So you could take action this evening and eliminate all frozen positions from, from a budget document, because again, it's paper. What you approve in the budget, when you approve the budget, you approve the funded positions. So there are a hundred and ninety-nine funded and approved positions proposed in this budget.
And it's also on paper that we've hired positions and things like that, so everything's on paper. All I'm saying is, how long does it stay on this?
Indefinitely.
Okay, that's...
Long as the council would like.
All right.
Hiring, we hired two additional police officers last year, we added two police officers this year. So you could look at it as unfreezing frozen positions, or we could have reset to zero at some point in the past and added positions. It's somewhat semantics.
Any other questions?
No, I'm done.
You're done.
I have another question about the fire secretary position. I remember you telling us that the fire chief told you that it was a nice-to-have, but it was not a need-to-have, and now it's in the budget. So I, I don't understand why it went from a nice-to-have to a need-to-have.
Are you referring to a part-time or a full-time?
The full-time.
Okay.
And then, during the budget workshop, Chief Wise cited a call volume of nine to twelve calls a day, which equals two hundred and fifteen to two hundred and... which equals two hundred and fifteen to two hundred and fifty a month, which is less than one point five calls an hour. So I would still say that I don't see a need for a full-time fire secretary. I can see where they can have a part-time secretary. And just as I suggested during the budget workshop, then at the mid-year, we see what's going on. And if it truly does warrant a full-time position, because when we discussed it, I believe it was during the budget workshop, then you came up with three different staffing options for the full-time fire secretary. You said it could be full-time fire, part-time fire in finance, or part-time fire in city clerk. And with those three scenarios, it doesn't really look like there's any clear definition of where the position is going to work. So then why do we really need to add it?
Operationally, we feel we need that position. The one, as I mentioned earlier, the, the one change was the thirty-two thousand dollars that we were budgeting for administrative support of the contract with Modesto that will be coming to the city council at the next meeting on the twenty-fourth for the training center that will be jointly operated between the City of Modesto, the City of Series, and Salida. That operation will provide training for those three entities. And there is administrative support that would be required by that contract. So we had budgeted the thirty-two thousand. With this idea of having a full-time fire secretary, we'd be able to absorb that. And the secretary would be able to provide those services and not have to expend those thirty-two thousand. They would be done, in essence, in-house rather than contracting or paying one of the other agencies to provide that. We would bring that person in-house. And that, that was really the impetus for drive, for changing from part-time fire to full-time fire was that agreement. There, again, we were hoping to have that agreement this evening. But if you've watched the news or any around, around us, Modesto and, um, Oakdale are getting married on their fire service. Just, Oakdale and consolidated, got a divorce. And so that changed Modesto's focus and efforts to focus on getting that contract put together. And it put our, um, fire training contract on the back burner. It is anticipated to be there. So hence why we believe the fire secretary is the appropriate location for that full-time position on the basis of that contract being in place.
So we haven't approved the fire training agreement?
Have not, it is.
We do not know if we're going to approve it, correct?
Not.
Because it's a council decision?
Correct.
And even if it were to be approved, I don't see where the administrative responsibilities plus the one point five phone calls a day would still warrant a full-time secretary. Again-
Phone calls aren't the only thing the secretary does.
You know what? I was there. I was a secretary here for twenty-nine and a half years. So I know how it works, okay? And I know that any secretary does more than phone calls. I understand that. But I also believe things may have changed since I've been gone nine years. But I still think, just like an engineer and you being, wearing your engineer hat, I'm going to put on my secretary hat. And I'm going to believe I have a pretty good knowledge of how it works. Thank you. And I believe it should be part-time. And those are my only questions.
Councilman Klein?
Uh, Ms. Dean, uh, feel, please feel free to speak up when necessary. Is, uh, is this a balanced budget?
As I, excuse me. So indicated essentially balanced. One thing that I didn't mention, um, eighty-six thousand dollars that's shown as the deficit. Um, there are asset seizure monies that are outstanding that we've already provided public notice on. That asset seizure timeframe ends on June twenty-ninth. We will bring in an item on July eighth to recognize those asset seizure monies, which will be somewhere in the ballpark of about eighty-six thousand dollars. So depending on what happens with those asset seizures, if any claims, it may drop below there. But we do expect those asset seizure monies to come in the first meeting in July. Um, a couple of other things I will factor in there, um, in terms of getting to officially balanced. You know, it is a projection. Um, there is an, an estimate factor of it. We do have general funded positions that would be new, provided that the council were to approve those. It will take several months to fill. So, i.e., um, the parks maintenance worker, senior parks maintenance worker, or even, um, the, um, why am I blanking on it? Going to back my list. Anyways, those positions will be delayed by at least three or four months before they're actually here to have a budget impact. We budgeted them as of July one.
So Ms. Dean, do you, is, in your opinion, is this a balanced budget?
I think everything that he just said is, um, correct. It is not balanced, but he has, um, revenues that he's anticipating coming in that will make it balanced.
So is it definite that it's balanced? It's essentially balanced, correct? But it's not definite?
Yes, it does show that we are expending more than we are receiving, based on the projections that we have there, yes.
Okay. And so of the overview slash summary on page three of the budget, out of the positions we are unfreezing or adding, how many are paid out of the general fund?
So the two dispatchers, so I've got the list up here. Two dispatchers, records clerk, senior parks maintenance worker. The maintenance worker is internal service fund. So it's not directly paid out of the general fund. It apparently is a portion of it is allocated. So just to explain that, that facilities, internal service fund, they, they bill back to the projects they work on. For example, if they're working here in the community center or in the police department, there's an allocation at the time. So it's, it's not direct general fund, but it is indirect apportion general fund. Uh, senior civil engineer is non-general fund. Associate engineer or senior tech is non-general fund. The secretary position would be general fund.
Uh, and Ms. Dean, uh, could you, of those positions, what are their salaries? Would you be able to go through and state the salaries for the public?
Um, if you give me just a minute, I can-
Thank you.
Pull up the budget model and I could tell you.
Just salary or fully burdened?
I like, I like both.
So for the dispatchers, the ballpark number there is about eighty-five thousand dollars each, um, fully burdened because our contract with Newman is a hundred and ninety thousand. So that's somewhere in that ballpark. I think it's just a little bit below that for those two. The other ones I would, uh, would estimate. So I'll wait, wait for, if there's other questions, we can, we can do with those questions and then Suzanne can provide the information.
Okay, um, the records clerk is budgeted at J thirty-eight Step C with a salary of thirty-five thousand nine sixty-four. Um, when you add in the benefits, um, and all of the other costs associated with the position, the total cost of the position is seventy-five thousand five fifty-six. Um, the dispatchers, the salaries are budgeted at, uh, J fifty Step C. And the current sal, the salary would be forty-eight thousand three sixty. And the total, uh, rate would be ninety-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-two.
Is that for one?
That's for one. The police officers, um, they are budgeted, budgeted at thirty-six U Step C. And with the assumption that they will be, um, tier-six employees. So their, um, salary would be sixty-seven thousand ninety-two dollars. And their total cost is a hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and eight dollars, um, each. The senior parks maintenance worker, um, that is budgeted at J forty-nine Step C. Um, the salary is forty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars. And the total cost is one hundred six thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. I failed to mention, with all these positions, I also budget as if they have a family and put in the maximum amount for, um, benefits for them.
I breeze it before I-
The senior civil-
Breeze it.
Sorry, I got the wrong tab. The senior civil, um, is budgeted at, uh, J seventy-seven Step C with a salary of ninety-four thousand two hundred and twelve. And, um, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand one twenty-seven is the total cost. And the associate engineer is budgeted at J seventy-two Step C with a salary of eighty-three thousand two sixty-eight. And a total cost of one forty-two, eight hundred and eleven. And then, um, for the secretary position, um, for, um, code enforcement, all of the costs would be shifted to the, um, Department thirteen and not split. And, uh, the salary, um, I have budgeted at J forty-five Step D. And it's forty-four thousand eight ninety-two with a total cost of ninety, oh, excuse me, seventy-four thousand two eighty-seven. And then the secretary position that is budgeted in, um, the fire department is budgeted at J forty-five Step E. And it's forty-seven thousand one twenty-four. A total cost of ninety-three thousand two eighty-two.
And I want to thank, uh, Councilman, uh, Klein for pointing out that, uh, freezing issue. I noticed the same thing. Uh, so just to be clear, there's going to be three officer positions that are frozen and two unfrozen, correct?
That's correct. And we have maintained those frozen positions so that we can accurately respond to council so that we know.
Okay.
And also the POA has repeatedly asked for this information.
Okay. So what will our total sworn officer staff level be if all positions are filled?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, okay. Okay, out of that, what will be our total patrol officer number?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four? And does that count sergeants?
No.
Oh, okay. So code enforcement. It says that we are freezing a code enforcement supervisor. Is Sergeant Coley being paid out of the PD or code enforcement?
PD.
Okay. And without cannabis revenue, would our city have a four-point-five million reserve?
No.
How much money in the budget is dedicated to the surface water treatment plant?
Four-point-five? Four, four and a half million is anticipated for fiscal year nineteen twenty out of Fund five twenty-seven.
Okay. And that's, that's the only money in the budget that's dedicated towards the project?
Correct.
Okay.
Not general fund money.
Not general fund, okay.
Water rate money. Enterprise funds.
And I, I see that we have a three-point-six million dedicated tor, uh, towards contract services. What exactly is contract services and how do these operate?
Can you be more specific? What, what's line item you're seeing contract services?
Ms. Dean, do you understand the question?
I'm not, I'm not sure which department are you, um, are you in?
Well, just, just for general, building services has been allotted money for contract service facilities, you know?
Um, the building department, uh, we contract with San Sos County to do all of our, um, plan inspections and inspections from the, um, projects that are being completed in the city. Mr. Westbrook, um, has an offsetting revenue. So we collect the money on our building permits to pay for these services.
Okay. I just noticed that each department was allotted a certain amount for contract services. I wasn't quite, uh, quite clear what the, exactly those were. So that's why-
Anytime we enter into any lease agreements, like our copy machines are in contract services.
Okay.
We contract with an outside agency or an outside vendor to, uh, provide services that we are unable to provide for ourselves. They go into contract services.
Okay. And did, did these expenses go up from last year?
In some departments, yes.
Okay.
I know, for instance, in my department, um, uh, ours have gone up because, uh, we have the time clock plus, um, system. That's one of the, the reasons that drove our costs up. And it's, um, it's our timekeeping system. And we have the annual maintenance. And then we're still doing some implementation for the scheduling piece of that.
Okay. And are any staff members allotted car allowances in addition to their salaries?
Um, the city manager and, um, the finance director both get car allowances.
How much are those?
I believe the, mine's thirty-six hundred.
Uh, mine's five hundred a month, so six.
About six thousand for the city manager.
Per contract.
Okay. And so, and I also noticed that there's six grand for council members classified as professional, uh, development. What does that go towards? The professional development funds?
Generally, council has used that to attend legal California cities, um, other activities.
So training activ, I mean-
Council can speak to some of those items. There's a number of items there.
All right. Uh, how much of the budget is dedicated to the city council, roughly?
I, I didn't bring my budget book. I'm so sorry. It's taking me longer to pull things up.
I can tell you.
I believe the number was one hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-eight.
Sounds about right. Again, spread across three funds, right? General fund, water, sewer. Split, third, third, third.
So how much of that one hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-eight goes towards the council's health insurance?
Break that down.
Yeah, my surface pros-
Guessing-
Around nine, ninety-four thousand or so?
I, I think it's, it's real close to a hundred thousand dollars for the council, yes.
Well, I, I think, uh, that could potentially be a tenure plan for the community center. That's close to a hundred thousand. So, you know, I, I would like to make a motion here tonight that the council relinquish its health insurance benefits. Um, you know, uh, with the, with our city's low meaning income, our health insurance should not be put on the back of the taxpayers. That's not why we ran for office. That's certainly not why I ran for office. And I'd like to make a motion to strike out the council's health insurance benefits in this year's budget. I'd like to get a second if possible. When did this city start accepting health insurance? This, curious question.
About two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven?
Does that sound about right? Oh, seven?
That, I think that sounds about right.
All right. Well, again, I, I'm making a motion to eliminate that from this year's budget. That put us on a tenure plan to that community center.
I personally would like to hear all the options for the community center before making any decision.
Sure. Well, I'll be bringing it up then. Thank you.
Okay.
I just, a couple of things here in regards to, uh, Toby. And, uh, you know, I've been doing this. I think this is like my twelfth year, eleventh year. And obviously, we had Art as the city manager. And you came on board, Toby. I don't know how many years it's been, seven, six, whatever. Somewhere around there.
Five years as city manager, twenty-fourteen.
And you brought us a budget every year. And the budget's spot-on for the most part. I know Suzanne-
Got to thank, got to thank my team.
You have, you have helped there with Suzanne and, and everybody else.
The department heads that are out here.
It's funny because the cannabis that, that we actually have and the amount of money that were generated from it, obviously, was voted by the, uh, by the state individuals here in California, has allowed us to, whether it's on paper or not, to hire police officers. That's a pretty cool thing, to hire firefighters. I think that's another cool thing, to give raises. See, we took ten percent from employees and, uh, that, that, uh, well-deserved, more money than that, and they stuck around. I think our, our retention rate was about maybe ninety-seven percent in regards to how many people stuck around. And, uh, so, you know, I'm all for the actual, uh, code enforcement individual. We talked and we've talked. I've heard all of you guys talk in regards to, uh, we, the, the secretary for code enforcement. So-
Uh, that wasn't the one I was addressing. I was addressing fire.
Right, right. However, so we need more code enforcement. We need to help them. So we hire a code enforcement individual. And then the fire might not have as many calls as the code enforcement, but the code enforcement secretary is probably pretty darn busy. I mean, I know there's a lot of people contacting me that are getting citations right now that, you know, so somebody's doing a lot of work there. No pun intended. But, you know, I, I, I just see this thing and haven't been doing this for as long as I have. I'm like the second longest-tenured individual. And I was, the, the benefits were here before I came on board. And that's not why I became a council member. I became a council member because I want to give back to the community for crying out loud. But enough on that. So I, I just want to thank you for this budget. And I seriously believe that, that this is, is balanced a hundred percent. And again, if you want to say ninety-nine because there's some things and some pieces missing, but we're going to have some more money coming from the cannabis. So anyways.
Any other comments? For open it up for the public? Okay, at this time, I'll open it up for the public. Anyone that would like to address this item, please come forth and state your name for the record.
Uh, Dave Prattis Series. I love this shell game. Borrow money from Peter, pay Paul, but Paul doesn't always pay back Peter. And then, uh, along comes Mr. Wells saying we need more funds than these other pools. And then, uh, along comes Mr. Wells saying we need more funds in these other pools to do projects or is that money just to put more money in for loans? And when you talk about borrowing money from other pots to keep a balanced budget, are you really keeping a balan- balanced budget?
Anyone else?
John Warren Series. Good evening. Thank the council for allowing me to speak this evening. I had a couple of questions. I had the privilege to attend the workshop, um, with the budget recently and I was impressed by the diligence that the members, uh, took in putting this together. But I did have a question, and I think it may have been answered this evening already, about the code enforcement secretary which was sharing half-time with the fire department.
We're, we're talking about it being full-time now.
Yes, exactly. That's the question I have. So the code enforcement will be full-time? That leaves the fire department with a half-time position?
No, the, the budget is recommending a full-time fire and the full-time code enforcement.
Okay, I think that was, I had thought there was just going to be one new hire and now there's going to be actually one and a half.
One new position. Today, there's one position that's fifty-fifty. If approved, there would be one in each.
So...
An FTE, so full-time equivalent. One full-time equivalent is being added.
Well, if you only had one person that was sharing, that's fifty-fifty. And if you have one new position, then that means what happens to the other two half-times?
Two half-times become one. So one person is doing...
You're hiring one and a half people then?
No, we're hiring one.
We're hiring one.
We are... Hiring one, then the person over here with the fire department, that's just a half-time position.
But it's the same person. Same person is...
And that position will become full-time?
Correct.
So that's act- you're adding half?
No, you're adding one full-time position.
One full-time, but there's a half?
No.
There's two halves today.
There're two halves, okay.
Two halves today, equal one.
Okay.
Borrow, one. One added position.
The salary of the code enforcement person, secretary, whatever the position is, I thought was higher when we, when I listened to the workshop, um, discussion. But today, I think I was told or it was explained that the salary for that secretary position was going to be forty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars.
At the workshop, I was giving fully burdened numbers.
And the fully burdened, or the total is seventy-four thousand two hundred.
Said seventy-five.
And that's the figure that I heard, okay. So that was a concern that I had based upon the salary structure from some of the other cities, departments, and what our police officers make here in the city. So that question was answered and I thank the council for allowing me to speak.
Shawna Moore Series, uh, thank you for letting me speak. I just had a question because I haven't attended enough of the meetings to even understand how the budgets and where salaries go or who gets what and for why. My only question, just as an onlooker, is why an associate engineer would make more than our police officers? Is that something that's comparable in other cities? Because it just seems like to me that our police officer salaries, I don't know if this is incoming salary at sixty-seven thousand a year, is awfully low in comparison to an associate engineer at eighty-three thousand incoming a year.
Those are, I mean, I answer, those are comparable costs in the industry.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Jean Yeakley. Uh, Chance, uh, kind of brought up an issue that I thought of many years back about, uh, health insurance for city council members. I'm kind of wondering why it was initiated in the first place. Uh, I'm not saying that you don't do a good job or anything, but at the same time, you got employees that are putting in forty-hour weeks or more, four times a month. And if I'm heard it correctly, you get the same insurance benefits, healthcare, as a full-time employee. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, I would say, I would say yes, it's correct.
I- is it because, why, why were they given that to begin with? I mean, some of you probably weren't here then, but what was the, the, uh, reason why?
Well, I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, uh, council compensation was, was created or developed, uh, in the seventies or eighties. And at the time when this change came, there was a review of surrounding jurisdictions to see where Series was with respect to other jurisdictions. And based upon staff recommendation at the time and the analysis, if I remember correctly, that was what was presented, uh, did not take place by, um, for the voting body. It took place at the future, uh, elections so that, in essence, they weren't voting themselves in. And that's how we are today. I would say that we're about middle of the road from what, um, other jurisdictions, uh, get, uh, for compensation. And that's, that's how we are, where we are.
But they do get the same benefits as some work?
Some jurisdictions get much more. Some get salaries, I mean...
Yeah, yeah, Los Angeles, San Francisco, something like that.
No, Modesto.
I believe Man-...
Oh, yeah.
Tika does too.
All right.
About four thousand dollars a month in Modesto.
There's a huge, who, up and down the state, four-hundred-and-eighty cities.
I would assume that...
Huge variety.
Some individuals are still working that have some kind of healthcare plan that possibly from the city council. Would that be a big issue to relinquish that and let the city use it?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
I'm saying that, that, uh... That some of the individuals that work in the city council as council members, they've probably got jobs already or had jobs. I don't know if they have healthcare after retirement, if somebody's retired. But most people, and I understand Series doesn't do that, have, uh, extended healthcare after retirement. But that is a lot of money to, uh, to give away, you know, uh... I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but I don't think it's a great idea because more people put in more time and, and effort, uh, to keep the city going. Not that you don't do a good job, like I said, but that's a lot of money that's being given away compared to, uh, a full-time employee that gets the same benefits. I just don't understand the mathematics between them. It doesn't make any sense at all.
Well, first of all, I'm not sure you understand how many hours are put in. Um, and I mean, obviously...
Well, tell us.
I, you know, I'm not going to get into this debate about it. I mean, obviously, it's a discussion that will take place.
Yeah.
None of us have to take it. I mean, if someone doesn't want to take it, they can easily give up what, what they have. You know, I, I, when I took this job, I didn't necessarily take it for, and, and I've said this many times before, I wanted to make the city the best place that it could be. My family's been here a hundred and twenty years, okay? So, but I'm also realized that, you know, in my instance, I do have a business. And this job takes a lot of time away from my business and my business partners. So, um, there's a give and take and it's not just the hour that you see us up here. So, um, you know, and, until you have all of the facts, it's, it's easy to, to, to throw, you know, darts from the cheap seats. So just, you know, maybe you should do a little more research before you blindly come to a conclusion. I'm not saying what any of us will do. We'll start the discussion and we'll see where it goes.
Good.
But to sit there and go on the mic and say, "Well, you know, you aren't putting very many hours into..." I take a little bit of offense of it because I put a lot of hours into this job.
Well, I don't know how many hours. I just say, "Everybody does a good job", but it just seems like there's a lot of, uh, insurance money that could probably either temporarily to get back on the budget or whatever to, uh, put that money somewhere else for a short period of time, maybe, to get things back on track.
I think things are on track. I just don't know where some people are actually missing the, the boat here in regards to what's going on. And I think you're referring to me because I work right down the road here at the school district, which you know that, Mr. Yeakley. And I can take that insurance and for the first year or two that I was a council member, I didn't take this insurance because I had my own. And this, this insurance plan's better than that one, but I'm damned if I'm going to sit here and say that I gotta, uh, be ridiculed by you because I'm taking the city's money. I think that's, I think that's wrong.
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that at all.
That's exactly what you were saying.
That's your, that's your way of looking at it.
Oh, absolutely. But at the end of the day, you know what we could do? And not that we're going to act like we're a different district and we'll, not to bring up Bill, but why not? Put some humor into it. You know, what we're going to do is we're going to give ourselves a forty-two-hundred-dollar salary a month because at the end of the day, it's a lot of time. It's a lot of work. I would do this job for free and I was doing it for free. And I think your paycheck right now is zero dollars, isn't it, Mr. Viera? But at the end of the day, sorry for bringing that up, it's, uh, anyways, I'm done.
Well, I'm sorry, I upset everyone, but, you know, i- if we could, uh, release some money for a short period of time, and use it for Toby's budget there, uh, for this building here, uh, I think that'd be a good thing. That's just my opinion, just like you got yours. Thank you.
You know, I'm just surprised with this huge windfall that we're supposedly getting, why there isn't a boatload of people that are trying to run for public office. I mean, I think you were unopposed. Um, so if, if there's this giant windfall of...
I think you were unopposed too, Mr. Mayor. Weren't you not?
I was.
Yeah, you were. But I don't think you're giving the citizens enough credit. They don't run for health insurance just like we didn't.
I'm sorry I disturbed you people on this issue. I won't mention it again.
No, please mention. You're a taxpayer. You can mention as much as you want.
Does anyone like to address the council on this item?
Okay, I don't want to go against what he said, but I happen to be friends with at least four of you guys and I know exactly that you guys put in a lot of hours. And we've been going to all these meetings since Linda got elected and to see and to hear the investigations and the stuff that you have to go through and the stuff that you're doing on a, every two weeks, you know, whatever. You know, you come back with all your evaluations. You know, did Linda come up with all these questions, you know, about the budget, you know, just, just now? No, she had to sit down and read everything. You know, I mean, you have to sit down and go over it and, and, and time is money, you know? Mike is the same way, you know, all you guys. You have to sit down and read everything. Mr. Mayor talked about having a letter that you got from the, the grand jury today. Okay, well, it took you fifteen, twenty minutes to evaluate that letter and go, "Oh, wow", you know, and then, and now you talked about it for five minutes here, you know? So I'm not questioning, you know, the work that you guys do. There's no way. I would, I wouldn't do it, you know? Uh, my hat's off to you, okay? I do question, I did question the fact of the, the medical when it came around. It came around when I was, when I was working for the city and we were kind of strapped at the time. And all of a sudden, it, it, it left a bad taste in the employee's mouth when it came around. And it was something that, you know, it's just like right now, you know, you're reading it, uh, Congress, you know, in, uh, Washington C- DC, they want to give themselves a forty-two-hundred-dollar a month raise. For what? But anyway, I'm going to shut up. Goodbye.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for more discussion or direction.
I'm approving resolution number twenty-nineteen sixty-nine.
You're going to take both of them or one at a time?
We'll do one at a time.
You can do sixty-nine or sixty-eight first?
I have the wrong one.
Well, you said sixty-nine, so I'll second.
You're gonna... Does it matter which order?
You can do both together.
You can do both.
I'll take re- resolution number twenty-nineteen sixty-eight and number twenty-nineteen sixty-nine.
I'll second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and board member Condit?
Nay.
Council and board member Doroset?
Yes.
Count, um, vice mayor and vice chair Rhino?
No.
Council and board member Klein?
Yes.
And chairperson, chairperson Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes three-two.
Okay. Council member referrals. Is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda?
Yes, um, so at a future council meeting, I would like for the council to recognize school resource officer Lorenzo Beltron. He was recently selected as a Floyd Ledbetter National School Resource Officer of the Year. So I'd like to see that happen if possible.
Okay. You can do that, Mr. Wells. Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, I would like to have a little discussion in the near future. You know, talking to the city manager and finding out about our, uh, successor agencies and how long they're going to be on. You know, uh, not that Mr., uh, Steve Hallam is, he's been doing a fantastic job at it, but, you know, it's a part-time. I would like to probably look at a potential down the road to getting a part-time person that lives a little bit more locally with what's going on with, uh, you know, Walmart Center and that. So we'd have a little bit, uh, you know, more localized personnel that we can, we can feed, feed with. So, uh, it doesn't have to be done within the next thirty days, but I would like to have that open discussion within the next year.
Okay, can you put that on your...
Sure, Mr. Hallam's contract was scheduled to come at the next meeting so we could schedule it as a new visit item ahead of that conversation.
Okay.
That work?
No, that, that works and, and if we're going to do a new contract for him for a year, you know, at least it gives us a little bit of time for transition. But, you know, I just don't want to drop it off because he has done a fantastic job, um, with the, with the businesses that he has, he's brought and some of the retained and, and his outreach, outreach program that he's doing. But I think that, uh, you know, with some of the stuff that's going on with the K-Mart building closing and, and things like that, I'd like to see a little bit more of a, a localized, uh, person.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, with that, we will see Ms. Dean, anything?
Oh, wait, was that referrals or reports?
That was, oh, sorry, um, reports. Is there anyone on the council that has anything to report? Klein?
Nothing.
I'd like to remind everyone of our concerts in the park tomorrow night. They start at seven over at Whitmore Park and it's going to be hot, but it cools down real quick.
Councilman Condit?
Sure, I'd like just to take a moment to remember two great Series residents, Phil Reiners and Jim Leitres. They will be deeply missed and my thoughts and prayers are with their families during this time. And also, my office hours are every Saturday here at the community center between twelve and two. Hope to see you then.
Okay, uh, Ms. Dean? Tom? Mr. Wells?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We do have, um, as council will know, we received a grant from the, the state for our transit operations. Um, we will be having a free, uh, month in July and it'll go on through the course of the year with different, uh, promotions and activities. Um, so there'll be more information coming soon. Um, just, I sent that, some information to the council today. There'll be more information for the residents, so something to keep in mind. As the council may recall, the two or the three vacancies we have on Measure H, uh, the application period did close on Friday. We did receive, um, indication for one existing member who wants to recontinue and then we did get two applications, so we'll be reviewing those applications and sending to the council for your, um, kind of quick look. And then, based on having enough people to fill the spots, we would likely bring that back to council for action, uh, at the June twenty-fourth meeting for appointment. That would be effective July one.
Tom? Daniel? Rick? Okay. Kevin? Okay. Matt?
Just wanted to share, next week is really our start of the summer and today we brought on exceptional eighteen youth in the community to work for the city. And they'll be working as lifeguards and day camp counselors. And that was very exciting and I would just want to thank our HR department and finance, our payroll, for making that happen. It was a big task, um, and this week they're in training. And some good news about recreation is right now, um, we're looking at about a twenty-two percent increase in participation and about a thirty-five percent increase in revenue compared to past summers at this point. So very busy summer ahead, so we look forward to the community coming out to our swim lessons, our full-day day camp that we brought back after ten years to provide to residents who commute that need a full-day service, especially once summer school's out. So just some great numbers and we look forward to everyone participating in our programs this summer. And we are on the, if you want to find out more about our services, our brochure is up on the city website. Thank you.
Thanks. Bettina?
Thanks. Bettina? Jeremy? Did Steve leave, or is he still? He's gone? Okay. I don't think I missed anyone. All right. With that, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Monday, June twenty-fourth at six P M. Thank you.